Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, October 2nd, 2023, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the United States of America, to your purpose, to his hands, for the nation under God, indivisible, et veritatis.
Just want to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum that govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments should be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. This phase of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to speak publicly must complete a comment card. For each agenda item, the person wishes to address, including the person's full name, address, and a numbered agenda item. And also, the card should be completed and turned in prior to that item being called on the agenda. All right. Mister Assistant City Administrator, are there any additions, leishens, reorganization of the agenda?
There are none, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm delighted that the first item that we will be doing is a presentation. A check presentation. Belissa Alvarez, the Executive Director of Related Philanthropic Foundation, is here tonight to present a $100,000 check from Related Philanthropic Foundation payable to the Mayor's Jump Start Academy Program. And on behalf of the Mayor's Jump Start Academy, I'm happy to accept this incredibly generous gift, and we are committed to utilizing it for the betterment of our community. Thank you so much. Also, I did see, I thought I saw President and CEO, Danita Dehaney, here. The Community Foundation, who is our fiscal agent. And Danita, if you would like to stand for recognition, maybe could join us for a photo up front. Thank you. You want to come down there or you're gonna give a little speech?
Wherever you would like me to.
Why don't we come down and then I'll take a picture? Thank you so much, thank you. Please, you wanna say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor James, City Commissioners, other city officials, and everyone in attendance today. As the mayor said, my name is Belissa Alvarez. I'm the Director of the George M. Perez Family Foundation and the Related Philanthropic Foundation. The Related Philanthropic Foundation is the charitable arm of the Related Group, and it focuses on helping to build communities through the investments in areas such as arts and culture, education, economic empowerment, and urban resilience. George Perez and his family have a long history of giving back in South Florida. And as a part of that, they have an unwavering commitment to the West Palm Beach community and its residents. As we all know, small businesses are often the economic backbone of a community. For this reason, we are proud to be here today to announce our commitment to the Mayor's Jump Start Academy Program. And we thank you all for your time and just allowing us to be here today and being able to provide the support.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to the Consent Calendar, items 7.1 through 7.11. Any questions or comments on consent? Do we have any cards on consent? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move acceptance of the Consent Calendar as presented, items 7.1 through 7.11.
Very good. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
They've moved a second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Resolution, item 8.1, Resolution Number 251-23, accepting the contribution of the Historic Preservation Bonus Assessment related to the approval of the Northwood Square Project, and Resolution Number 256-23F, recognizes the proceeds and provides appropriations for historic preservation programs and projects. Is this... Miss Aponte, who's speaking to this?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Anne Hamilton, Historic Preservation Planner. This is a companion resolution to the one that you were presented earlier this afternoon by Deputy Director Aponte for the CRA. It is appropriating funds of $65,000 to the Northwood Fund for Historic Preservation, specifically for projects relating to historic preservation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, do we have any cards? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 251-23 and Resolution Number 256-23F.
Very good. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 9.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5066-23, proposing a ballot question which, if passed, amend Section 2.01 of the City Charter, increasing a candidate's residency requirement from six months to 12 months. Ms. Rothenberg?
Mayor Commissioners, nice to have a good working microphone. This is second reading, there are no changes since first reading, but I am available for questions if you have any.
Very good, any questions, comments? All right. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you so much. I just, I've had some questions about this item, and I just want to clarify. I mean, what we're doing tonight is basically voting to put these items on the ballot so that the public can make the decision on how to move forward.
Yes, it is. If, if after the March election, you have the sufficient support by the residents to change the charter, then the amendment would be effective thereafter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5066-23 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5066-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Amending the Charter of the City of West Palm Beach, Subject to voter approval at Section 2.01, City Commission, District Boundaries Established for Residency to Qualify for Candidacy and Reappointment, To Increase the Candidate Residency Requirement of Continuously Residing In the City From Six Months to Twelve Months Providing for Qualification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 9.2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5067-23, Proposing a Ballot Question to Amend Section 3.01 of the City Charter To Prohibit the Mayor's Potential Outside Employment and Limit the Business Relationships. Ms. Rothenberg?
Again, members of the Commission, Mayor, this is second reading. There have been no changes to the proposed ballot language or the proposed ordinance change should the ballot language be approved by the voters. And we are available for questions if you have any.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5067-23 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5067-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Amending the Charter of the City of West Palm Beach, Subject to voter approval at Section 3.01, Mayor, To Prohibit Potential Outside Employment and Limit Business Relationships, Providing for Qualification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 9.3, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5068-23, Amending the City's Elections Code to Require Submission of Documentation Evidencing a Candidate's Proof of Residency at the Time of Qualifying for Office. Ms. Rothenberg?
Again, this is the second reading of the proposed ordinance that changes our Chapter 30 on the Elections Code section to require specific documents to be submitted at the time of qualifying. I am available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5068-23 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5068-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Amending Chapter 30, Elections of the Code of Ordinances, Section 30-1, Dates for Candidates to Qualify for City Offices, Procedure for Qualification, To Add Proof of Residency Requirements, Providing for Qualification, Providing for Severability and Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 9.4, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Orders Number 5069-23, Restating and Amending the City's Policy Establishing Expenditure of Public Funds For Donations, Contributions, and Fundraising Events To Increase Expenditures for Events From $500 per Event to $1,000 per Event.
This is my final ordinance of the evening, it is second reading. There have been no additional proposed changes. The only change is increasing the amount available for expenditure from $500 to $1,000.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5069-23 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5069-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Amending and Restating Ordinance Number 3253-99, Which Amended the Policy Establishing Authority for the Expenditure of Public Funds For Donations, Contributions, and Fundraising Events, Providing an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. All right, item 9.5, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5070-23, Amending Provisions of Chapter 62 of the City's Code of Ordinances Pertaining to the Civil Service and Other Related Personnel Provisions.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second reading of Ordinance 5070-23, Updating the Ordinance Provisions Related to Civil Service and Related Personnel, Parts of the Ordinance, and there have been no changes since first reading.
Very good. Any questions, comments on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5070-23 at second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
They've moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5070-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach at Chapter 62, Personnel and Retirement, Article 2, Personnel Policies, Division 2, Compensation and Leave Policies, Section 62-51, Classification and Compensation of Employees, Amending and Restating Article 4, Civil Service, Division 2, Civil Service Board, and Division 3, Classification, To Revise and Clarify Provisions Regarding the Classification of Employees and the Civil Service Board, Providing a Qualification Clause, Providing a Conflict and Severability Clause, Providing an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 9.6, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 5064-23, Granting an Access and Utility Easement to Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless Across City Property Lying South of 47th Place North.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission, thank you so much for your time this evening. This, my name is Suzanne Burgla, I'm the Assistant Director of Engineering for the City of West Palm Beach. This ordinance is proposing to grant an access and utility easement to Selco, doing business as Verizon. So pursuant to Section 22-31 of the City of West Palm Beach Code of Ordinances, The granting of an interest in city property shall be approved by ordinance, and such ordinance shall be approved by a supermajority vote of the City Commission at either first or second reading. This is a proposed access easement for a Verizon tower within an existing FPNL easement. It's located on city property, south of 47th Place North and west of the city's East Central Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. And Verizon agrees to pay the city $3,000 per year, which will increase, that amount will increase about 5% every year. And with that, staff recommends approval of the public hearing and first reading of Ordinance Number 5064-23, Granting an Access and Utility Easement to Selco, Doing Business as Verizon Across City Property Located South of 47th Place North. Any questions?
Very good, thank you. Any questions? All right. Is there anyone from the applicant here? Okay. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 5064-23.
Second.
They've moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5064-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Granting an Access and Utility Easement to Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless Across City Property Located South of 47th Place North, Providing, Providing an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9.7, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 244-23, Declaring Certain Properties on the City's and CRA's Real Property Inventory List To Be Suitable for Affordable Housing Purposes As Required by Florida Statute 166.0.5. Ms. Ferriello?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Members of the public, Jennifer Ferriello, Housing and Community Development Director. This presentation will also be presented by my colleague, CRA Director, Chris Ruge. So as required by Florida statute, the City of West Palm Beach, we are required to prepare an inventory list of all city property that may be suitable for affordable housing purposes. The list must be prepared every three years, and we are required to have that inventory posted on the city's webpage to ensure that there is the promotion or to promote affordable housing development. Just recently, under SB 102, we are now required to include any properties that are within our geographic boundaries, including those that are within dependent special districts, meaning CRA properties. That's why we will be reviewing those today. I want to make sure that I highlight that the purpose of today is simply to identify what those properties are. We are not declaring any properties are surplus, we're not selecting a method of disposition. That recommendation is not going to be made today. We'll come back at another commission meeting, make that recommendation to you, but we're not doing that today. We're just simply going through our list to ensure that we are meeting the requirements of the state statute. I want to also point out that when we declare properties suitable for affordable housing, it may have numerous definitions of what that means. And it may mean that we may offer the property for sale with a certain amount of the proceeds of that sale to be deposited into our local housing trust fund, and then those funds be utilized for affordable housing development. We may decide that we want to convey the property and restrict the property to include a certain amount of units to be set aside as affordable housing, or the entire parcel or the entire development to be set aside for affordable housing. We may also decide that we want to donate those properties to a nonprofit organization that will then construct affordable housing on the site. Again, that's what is determined, or that is the definition of what we find suitable for affordable housing purposes. Again, that determination will not be made today. I also want to talk a little bit about how we identify which land is suitable for those purposes. Generally, we have an internal meeting where we'll just review the site conditions of each site. We'll look to determine if there's any history on the parcel, any environmental concerns, any neighborhood plans that are currently in place, and we discuss potential uses. That's done internally amongst various city departments. We also discuss if there's an interest for any other departments to be able to utilize these lots. And then obviously, we make the recommendation and the determination to city administration, and then we bring it forward to this governing body. And so just to get the ball rolling in terms of reviewing the sites, let's start first with some of the sites on Broadway. I wanted to lump all of them and include these five parcels just for the purposes of illustrating where they're located. You may recall that this, these parcels were utilized for the development of the Arts on Broadway project, which unfortunately did not move forward. But we are declaring or making the recommendation for these properties to be set aside or suitable for affordable housing. They are again located on the Broadway corridor in District 1. Oh, I want to point out that they have a combined assessed value of over $218,000. Next, we have another property in District 1, 6004, I'm sorry, 614th Street. It has an assessed property value of $39,930, and that property is currently vacant. Most likely, what's best suited for this property is a single-family home. 3100 North Australian, it's one of the most valuable assets in terms of real estate that we currently have. It has an assessed property value of about $552,000. However, we did get an appraisal, which it's a little bit more, it's valued at a little bit more. That property is located in District 1, and it is a vacant parcel. 1014, 10th Street, this is located in District 3, valued at $28,000 or so. It is a vacant parcel, the best, most likely used for that location is a single-family home. 1109 Henrietta, also located in District 3, valued at $20,000, it is vacant. We'll probably have to adjourn that property with the adjoining property and do a unity of title, because as it stands, you can currently develop on just this specific parcel, but it is vacant, and again, it will likely have the possibility of developing a single-family home. This is the adjacent site that we just discussed. Again, also located in District 3, and it is vacant, possibly suited for a single-family development. Another property on 10th Street, valued at $41,263, located again, District 3, most likely suitable for single-family development. And finally, we have property located at 427 Macy Street in District 5. It is, currently has an assessed property value of $227,000. That property is, currently it is improved, but again, it could be set aside for either donation or for sale for a single-family home, of a single-family home. That concludes our inventory of city assets. Before I ask the CRA Director to come up and discuss those CRA parcels, I'm going to entertain any questions particularly related to this process and/or to any city properties that we have just outlined.
Any questions from Ms. Ferriello, Commissioner Ward, and then President Warren?
I know you mentioned that we're not talking about the actual method of disposal, but going to the one that, the multiple properties on...
Should we speak closer to...
Sorry, on Broadway. I obviously remember Arts on Broadway and the long process with that, and those other adjacent properties have been acquired by someone in the private sector. And have they entertained any willingness to develop the entire parcel in a different manner versus Arts on Broadway?
Yes, so to answer your question, yes, there, there's a private developer that owns the two adjacent sites next to these properties. We have received, or they have communicated to us that they have a potential project. We have discussed with the mayor and the administration the idea of doing an invitation to negotiate, which we will bring back to you. Of course, the method of disposition is if this governing body wants to go in a different direction, that is that you're, you have the ability to make that determination. But as it stands, I think the intent is that we're going to come back and request that we issue an invitation to negotiate. Thank you.
Now, President Warren?
Thank you, Ms. Ferriello. And I heard you mention that a lot of, several of the properties were being recommended for single-family homes. The larger property that was on Broadway, did we identify what our plan is for that property or what a best use that we would like to see?
Not, not as of yet. I still, we haven't had that discussion with administration as of yet. It could be potentially suited for development, especially with the new Senate bills that have just been passed and the additional development capacity that this property could take advantage of. We haven't had that discussion internally as of yet. This is one of those properties that we still need to vet out and determine what the best use is. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, excellent.
All right, Mister Ruge?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Christopher Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. So when, when Jennifer asked me about this, it was actually a pretty tough question. And it's really because the CRA's property holdings are pretty extensive. And that's mainly because of just all of the work and things that we have been doing in the historic Northwest primarily, and also what we're doing along Broadway. So as we went through the list, we identified essentially those properties that are either landlocked or available for really not much more than perhaps single-family home construction, or there is no planning process going on currently. So as I go through this, well, I'm not going to go through it parcel by parcel, but as you look and review the list, we basically broke it down between the downtown city CRA, and then there's a list for the Northwood Pleasant City Broadway CRA. And on these lists essentially include those that we can essentially either entertain some type of solicitation or do some type of notice of disposition if the board decides so now. However, you will probably notice that several properties are not on this list, and that's because they're being used for a variety of other redevelopment initiatives. Namely, starting with the downtown city CRA, is that we have a tremendous amount of properties that are located along the south side of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. And that is purposeful that they're not on this list, because we're using those parcels to do things like expand the Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard Bridge, which is currently being reviewed and planned for by Palm Beach County. And we want to be a partner in that to provide the space to build the bridge that enhances the overall neighborhood. In addition to that, there's a couple of others that when we look at this neighborhood, you know, there is a conversation about reviewing some of the zoning regulations. So those properties that are either historic preservation or we have historic preservation sites that are next to vacant lots, the plan is, is to review those closely, bring them back for some type of project that can then be bet out, namely for affordable housing. So in short, most of our properties are going to be used for affordable housing. They just may not be ready to be published just yet because we want to make sure that we finalize those plans before we issue that list. And those plans would come before and be discussed with the CRA board prior to being included in any kind of published list. So on this one, I don't know if there's any questions about this list. I'm not going to go by them parcel by parcel, but they are extensive. But pri- I'm not going to go by them parcel by parcel, but they are extensive, but primarily, all of the sites that are before you on this list can be used for single-family home construction.
Any questions on this list? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. In our earlier discussion in the CRA, we were looking at, I guess, some of the median home sales in the historic Northwest, that was something about $350,000, which I think we were all a little taken aback by that. So when I look at the number of properties that we have, it's important to me that I think that the best way that we can control to make sure that they're affordable is that if we can work with partners, such as we've done with Habitat for Humanity, or Neighborhood Renaissance, or similar groups where we can control the process a little bit to ensure that we are putting affordable housing in those spots, rather than if we dispose of them and somebody just wants to put, you know, a home to the highest bidder, I feel like then we lose control of having the affordable housing. So I just want to ensure that before anything moves forward on these spots, that you'll, we'll have the opportunity to have further discussion.
100%, Commissioner, and more so is that it'll be on that parcel by parcel basis. And for instance, historically, the board, the CRA board, has wanted to follow a formal procurement process. The CRA does have a tool that is the notice of disposition that we're using for many other projects. So a good example is this one, if you look down at the bottom, 639 Fourth Street, is one that we're planning on doing that notice of disposition and bringing it to the attention of affordable housing partners such as Neighborhood Renaissance, or Habitat for Humanity, and those folks that will ensure that the affordability goals are met by the city and CRA. And those will be, those proposals would then be brought back to the board.
Any other questions before we move on from this list? All right, you have another list?
Yes, so similar is the Northwood Pleasant City CRA. So you'll see that many of our properties on Broadway are absent, and that is purposeful, again, because of the B MUD initiative that is currently going underway. So that's an example where even though we have those lands available, and they are intended to be used for affordable housing, we're doing the planning process with B MUD, so as soon as that is completed, then those properties would then be added to this list. But in order to ensure that we're not being premature ahead of that process being completed, we wanted to just simply hold them for the time being until that B MUD process is complete, and then they would be included in this list. But we do have properties that are located within the Pleasant City sub-district that can be used for affordable housing now.
Okay, very good. Any questions on this list? All right.
And that concludes the CRA properties.
Very good. Any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 244-23. Second?
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. We're now moving into the quasi-judicial portion of our meeting. Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures, and it appears to be ready. We'll start with Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 10.1, I have had experte communications with the representatives of the developer. I have received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox.
As to this matter, item 10.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the developers. I have received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. President Warren?
Mayor, as to this matter, 10.1, I have had experte communications with the developer's representative. I have received written communications from the, from people in the community. I've received verbal communications from people in the community as well. I have not, I have not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. As to matter 10.1, I have had experte communications with the applicant, the applicant's representatives, and residents. I have received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
As to item 10.1, I have had experte communications with the applicant, the applicant's representatives, as well as neighboring associations and residents. I have received written communications in the form of emails from residents. I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on item 10.1 please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 10.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5061-23, a request by Harvey E. Oyer III of Shetland Bone LLP on behalf of Temple Israel, the West Palm Beach Inc., for rezoning of the plus or minus 1.828 acre property at 1901 North Flagler Drive, generally located at the southwest corner of Pine Street and North Flagler Drive, from Curry Mixed Use District, Core Two Subdistrict, to Curry Mixed Use District, Core One Subdistrict.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Louise, Principal Planner for the Record. This is second reading of the ordinance. There has been no change since first reading.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Oyer, do you want to make any kind of presentation?
Good evening. For the record, Harvey Oyer of Shetland Bone on behalf of Temple Israel, the applicant. Nothing has changed, unless you'd like to see the same presentation again, which I doubt you do. No need to, I would like to reserve time for rebuttal, should it be necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Any other questions in general? All right, we do have one card. Carol Mead?
Is the presentation about that? Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor James and Commissioners. My name is Carol Mead, and I live at Flagler Point. First, I would like to address the temple's continued claims of nine attempts to meet with Flagler Point. I was at the original Flagler Point meeting with their attorney, Harvey Oyer, on May 11th. Harvey stated that they were here to be good neighbors, but he was not here to ask for permission. They're here to tell us that they're putting in an application for the additional zoning height, and he said that the additional height would not matter to Flagler Point. I said, well, that remains to be seen depending on the design. In subsequent asks for meetings, we asked if they had anything to present to us, and that we were interested in understanding their plans and their designs, in which they replied they didn't have any, and that they just wanted to give the opportunity for Flagler Point to ask questions. We attended their August 24th meeting, and we came with 28 questions for them to answer, for which they answered zero. They gave the same presentation that you have all seen, that we saw on May 11th, and there was no additional new information. They continue to say they have no plans and no developer. However, they also continue to say that they're planning to build a school. We love that they're planning to build a school. We love that they're the temple. However, I guess they're planning to build a 26-story school and perhaps a new temple, but they have no plans. We were encouraged by Rick Green and the planning board to meet with their developer, and to date, there has been no introduction. So I'd like to ask, you know, you say you want to be a good neighbor, but when are you going to introduce us to your developer? Tell us your plans and be able to answer our 28 questions. As for your standard G property values, you say that Flagler Point will not have any financial impacts. I pointed out at the September 18th meeting, the loss of you is worth at a minimum 30% reduction, and that Flagler Point has 180 investors or 45% unit owners. Our tenants include workforce renters, medical staff who work at local hospitals and clinics, first responders, teachers, and they're going to be compromised and surrendering over the home and local workforce for years to come. Florida Tennessee law requires protection from a breach of quiet enjoyment. A breach of quiet enjoyment occurs when tenants experience disturbances that interfere with their living environment. In many jurisdictions, the concept of quiet enjoyment is enshrined in Tennessee laws and rental agreements. Some examples include noisy neighbors barking dogs and construction or renovation work in the neighborhood causing excessive noise throughout the day. In our case, this is going to be for seven days a week. In cases where a breach of quiet enjoyment is identified, tenants may pursue various remedies, such as seeking a rent reduction and/or even terminating their lease.
Thank you very much. That's the only card. Mr. Oyer, I don't know if you wanted to use your rebuttal time to address that? Don't have to.
No, sir. I think all of those questions were addressed and answered at the first reading.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 5061-23, changing the zoning designation of the 1.828 acre property generally located at the southwest corner of Pine Street and North Flagler Drive, at 1901 North Flagler Drive, from Curry Mixed Use District, Core Two Subdistrict, to Curry Mixed Use District, Core One Subdistrict. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the finding that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5061-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach by rezoning approximately 1.828 acres at 1901 North Flagler Drive, generally located at the southwest corner of Pine Street and North Flagler Drive, from Curry Mixed Use District, Core Two Subdistrict, to Curry Mixed Use District, Core One Subdistrict, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflict clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now turn to the public comment portion of the meeting. We do have a card, Sandy Makovich.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. March 6, 2023, first reading of Ordinance Number 5037-23, feeding the homeless. Ayes, Commissioner Fox, Lambert, Peduzzi, Ward, and Warren. Motion carried unanimously. March 20, 2023, second reading of Ordinance 503723. Ayes, Commissioner Fox, Lambert, and Warren. Motion carried three to nothing. City Commissioners Peduzzi and Ward, absent from the second reading. Did any of you consider the ramifications of passing this ordinance? Are you aware of how many no trespassing signs the city has added? Any area where the homeless can find refuge from the torrential rainstorms and thunder and lightning, you will see a no trespassing sign. During the recent Downtown Neighborhood Association, Deputy Chief Morris stated numerous times the police have zero tolerance for the homeless. Apparently, he meant it. Are you aware the police are now arresting the homeless for trespassing? In September 2007, the City Commission of West Palm Beach, Florida, passed an ordinance prohibiting the distribution of free food in Centennial Park. The city's motivation for the ordinance is evident from Mayor Lois Frankel's recent statement that the group decided it's their right to destroy West Palm Beach downtown permits. December 3, 2008, an attorney told a federal judge that the city commission had decided to repeal the ordinance and settled with the group, agreeing to pay them $100,000 in legal fees. Commissioner Peduzzi and Ward, both attorneys, I am now asking you to rescind Ordinance 503723. It takes two commissioners to accomplish this. Bring it back. One of you make the motion, the other one second the motion, and let's have a meeting to see if you still want to follow the leader, if that's what you ought to call them. Early meeting tonight, I'm sure all of you will go out now for a nice dinner, maybe a cocktail. Enjoy yourselves.
Thank you very much. All right, that's the only card we have, and now we'll turn to comments from members of the day, it's beginning with President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to acknowledge that today is the first business day of our new fiscal year for 2023, 2024, and I am just looking forward to seeing the energy and efforts for the upcoming fiscal year that can match some of the successes that we've seen in the fiscal year that just ended. I believe that there was a tremendous amount of thought and effort that has gone into employee satisfaction, recognizing that employees need certain things in order to achieve a quality of life that we want to see that our staff achieve. And I just think that we've made some significant moves that have never been seen before, and I don't know when the time will come that we will see those type of moves again, so I just wanted to stop and say that I know that it was very thoughtful and meaningful, and we worked collaboratively to see wonderful things come to pass for our employees, because we do know that the way that our employees feel certainly affects the way that they interact with our citizens, so. Continuing with the National Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, I'd like to acknowledge two brothers, proprietors Jimmy Rivas and Alberto Valadivia. They offer two restaurants in the heart of downtown West Palm Beach known as Rivalis on 106 North Olive, and a Cuban cafe called Corta Dito at 444 West Railroad Avenue. And looking forward to enjoying the best tacos and adult libations downtown West Palm Beach. October is National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. October is a great time to acknowledge zero tolerance for bullying, and we understand the devastating effects of children and families. Bullying can adversely impact social interactions, self-image, school performance, and lead to additional problems. Take action to prevent bullying every day by addressing bullying at school, talking about bullying at home, recommending a zero tolerance of bullying, and providing a supportive community for getting help. Residents and constituents of District Two, I'm looking forward to interacting with you on October 5th at Palm Beach Lakes High School for our District Two Visioning Session from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Palm Beach Lakes High School, 3505 Shiloh Drive, again, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Do come early, where you will meet with the Commissioner, which is me, and city directors and department heads, and have an opportunity to talk about the things that are impacting you, the things that you would like to see in our community, and all of your concerns. So please come learn, ask questions, and provide feedback to the staff. We're here to hear what it is that you have to say and what you would like to see for your city. That concludes my comments.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make residents who might be dropping off their kids at Coniston Middle aware that a notice of construction went out for this Thursday and Friday, that the city will be working to maintain our utilities in that area. We're going to be cleaning and grouting parts of the stormwater piping along Parker. It's the 3300 to 3800 Parker Avenue. The city is working to not impact student drop-off and pickup, but just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. Tomorrow is National Coffee with a Cop Day, and so we'll be at Solento, right here in front of City Hall. And, oh, I'm sorry, Wednesday, not tomorrow. I'm a day ahead. Thank you, Officer Buckson. 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Yes, good? Okay. Also, the South End Police Chief Meeting will be on October eighteenth at the Science Center STEM Building from six P M. to seven P M. So that is for District Five, so if you're a resident south of Okeechobee, east of ninety-five, and you have any concerns related to security or policing, I encourage you to come and meet our police chief and our leadership team on the Police Department. Mayor and Administration, I know that we got an update over the weekend. I'm very grateful that it sounds like staff was reactive to the flooding that happened over the weekend. It just seemed like the perfect storm of king tides and torrential downpour, and just want to say thank you to being proactive about that and reactive when we heard of other instances and saw photos on social media and heard from residents. I'm just curious if we might be able to get an update on maybe how some of the responses are going, if they're, if they all were able to be mitigated, and maybe they dissipated quickly, or if there's ongoing mitigation that needs to happen. And then finally, just wanted to encourage, as Commissioner Warren mentioned, the upcoming remaining visioning sessions, and just thank the Mayor and Administration and all of the staff that have been attending these. They're phenomenal, so if there's residents or stakeholders who have not attended one yet, I encourage you to attend the one in your district, but District One and District Five have already taken place, so even if you live in those districts, I encourage you to attend one of the ones that have yet to happen, because it really is an amazing opportunity to hear directly from staff in all of those departments, to communicate with your Commissioners, and to meet other, other residents and stakeholders in the community. I just want to say thank you to everybody who helped put this on. Thank you.
Thank you. To address your request, Mr. Farnak, can you distribute an updated status email tomorrow to me and the Commissioners on the flooding situation? Thank you. Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to also say a few words and piggyback on what Commissioners Warren and Lambert just mentioned about the series of free community education and engagement outreach workshops that are in each of the five Commission districts, and the one for District Four, the Western Communities of West Palm Beach, will be held October fourth, that's Wednesday evening, at the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, that's five four 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 Haverhill Road. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout, so if you live anywhere from the Okeechobee Boulevard side to the North Lake Boulevard side and all the developments in between, we hope to see you at that event, and look forward to seeing you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, October fourth, it's National Walk and Roll to School Day. This event addresses the need to make safer routes to school and encouraging students to be more active, and plus, it's a lot of fun. So there's several of the elementary schools in West Palm Beach that will be participating, including West Word, and I have a full list if anyone else would like them, but you can also go to walkbiketoschool.org to see the other schools participating, and it's just a fun chance to see the kids walking to school, get out and meet some of the parents, and meet some of the teachers, so I would encourage you all to do that, and that's, then you could roll right over to the Coffee with a Cop, as Commissioner Lambert mentioned, that will be held also on Wednesday, and I have it on good authority that there will be new coffee mugs this year. I think all of us have a collection, and apparently, there's some really cool new ones this year, so I'm looking forward to that, and I also wanted to thank Officer Buckston and some of the other officers who are supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month with their pink badges, so thank you for that. I also wanted to mention about the visioning sessions. My visioning session for District Three will be held tomorrow at the Arthritis Foundation Building on four hundred Hibiscus Street. It has been fantastic to attend the ones in District One and District Five, and to have such great attendance from the people that are living in your neighborhoods. Loved seeing all the staff giveaways. Have to say Public Works has the coolest ones, because they have little mini garbage cans with candy full inside, so in case you weren't already planning to come now, you know that there's a lot of good tchotchkes to come for them. So would love to see you tomorrow night and at the other ones later this week. I also wanted to say it was great to celebrate with all of you earlier today. One former Commissioner Ike Robinson was honored at the Forum Club, so congratulations to him, thank you for all that you've done. And also, I just want to thank staff. I spent many hours, I think yesterday, on the phone with staff from both the city and from the county discussing the issues of flooding, and so I just thank you very much for giving up your weekend to make sure that our neighbors were able to get out of their homes and were feeling safe. Luckily, there weren't any issues of people being in danger, but you know, it's hard when you look outside in the morning and there's no way to get your car out because you're in knee-high water, so really appreciate all the staff that took so much care to make sure that our neighbors were able to get around this weekend, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, and I'll echo the comments about the sessions that we've been having. Mine was the first one, and then followed by Commissioner Lambert, so I feel like really proud that District One has been showing up at the Broadway Visioning Session, and then the community event or the visioning at Gaines Park, to the neighborhood associations and all the meetings, like I just bravo to everyone taking time out of their evenings to participate in our local democracy. I want to mention my, the North End's Meet the Chief meeting, which is Wednesday, October eleventh, six thirty at Gaines Park. Last week, our last meeting was a very somber one discussing the issues with mold with the residents of Mangonia, and I still, I'm still getting emails from residents, so I hope our code officers have an update for the residents then, and that we're working really hard to make sure that those type of landlords know that we don't tolerate that in our city with our residents and people with small children that have to find elsewhere to live, because mold isn't being taken care of, so I just want to keep that on everyone's minds, because they're living it day to day. There's a public outreach for Deco Northwood Project, the prime company for, join the prime company for presentation introduction of their newest Deco Northwood Project located at twenty-nine hundred Broadway on Thursday, October twelfth, from five to seven at Temple Bethel, which is twenty-eight fifteen North Flagler Drive. I think that that is the, my only other comment tonight.
Very good, thank you. As you have heard from Commissioners on Deas, we are continuing the visioning workshops. I'll just give a summary of locations and times one more time, in case somebody missed it. This is an opportunity for people to learn about, ask questions, and provide feedback related to the city's upcoming initiatives, programs, and policies. And we, October third, tomorrow, will be at the Arthritis Foundation Building at four hundred Hibiscus Street for District Three. October fourth, the, at the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, fifty-four forty-four Haverhill Road for District Four. And then October fifth, Palm Beach Lakes High School, thirty-five oh five Shiloh Drive for District Two, but you don't have to reside in the district to go, you can go to any of the visioning sessions. And we, if you haven't been to one, we encourage you to, to go out and hear what the city is planning to do and ask questions. The special month-long parking rate promotion in the city's five parking garages ends on Friday, October sixth, so between now and then, take advantage of the reduced weekday evening parking rate of only two dollars from five P M. to midnight sharp. We are looking forward to another memorable, memorable evening of jazz with Nathan Mitchell on Wednesday, October eleventh, at the Lake Pavilion, one-on-one South Flagler, as the first event of the winter series of the Soul in the City. Visit wpb.com for more details. As has been previously mentioned, National Coffee with the Cop is this Wednesday at Solento Coffee from eight to ten A M. Please feel free to come out, enjoy coffee with our men and women in blue, some of our bravest employees. Mark your calendar for this Saturday, the opening day of the Best Farmers Market in the USA, Saturday, October seventh, from nine A M. to one P M. This year's green market will open as the largest ever, boasting a hundred twenty-five vendors, thirty of whom are new. It will also offer twice the entertainment, a monthly Master Chef Showcase Competition, and more than one weekly workshop. Almost said I might be in one of the Master Chefs, almost said that, but I didn't say that. Anyway, also, in observance of Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day, Monday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the city, West Palm Beach City Hall and Mendel Public Library will be closed. Regular trash and garbage pickup services will be provided, and City Hall and the library will reopen on Tuesday, October tenth. City Hall will reopen at eight A M., and the library will open at nine thirty A M. The city acknowledges and recognizes the second Monday in October is both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed by a delegation of Native Nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations of the Americas in nineteen seventy-seven, so we want to, certainly want to acknowledge that. And that concludes all my remarks for this evening. I thank you, everyone, for your attention, as meeting is adjourned.